Order. Thank you. If everyone who can rise, you rise for the. Okay, the first topic on the meeting is discussion action of the. Proposed adoption of the E L P S budget for fiscal year twenty two, twenty, two thousand twenty two. Down twenty three, two thousand twenty four. We just had our public hearing and got had some feedback from a variety groups and we are now at a point where we need to. Make a decision and pass this along to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. So. As we get there, is there anything? I know that we didn't want it the worst, did want to talk a little bit. And if we still do on the the project budget, I think was one open item that we did have a couple of questions on. That was one area that go is there are there other areas that you want to probe? You probably know we've spent a lot of time on this already, but there anything else? And then you know, it's too. You spend a few minutes on the project budgets and that then. And so that we had the.
Can share my share my screen.
So we have the we call project budget or repair maintenance budget.
Can you enable me to?
Yeah.
Thanks.
It was option four thirty seven.
It's a little hard to see in here, but that's.
So maybe are there any? That's are there any specific items? What are is there any? Are there any specific items that people want to question? Do they want to go through? Entire list. So to orient everyone, the first budget was the original budget and then superintendent made. His adjustments, which then comes to the superintendent proposed budget. Say, we don't, it's like one thirty nine, I think. Hundred thirty nine thousand, I think. I think it's one thirty.
One thirty nine.
Yeah, one thirty nine, three seventy seven. So. Are there any specific questions or any areas that anyone wants to?
Okay, so I have already questioned the entire thing two times. I don't have it in front of me and I can't see it. And my mirror is dead. So I had questioned. Holding off on it. If we could. And I was accused of kicking the can down the road, and I believe I addressed that at the last meeting because I don't believe that that. Is what I am trying to do. But when we're looking at saving money, it may be something. Off of that list, there are some things that maybe we don't have to do necessarily this budget season and can be held off. And I think that that is a valid question and should be looked at.
And is there anything maybe that we could specific that maybe I know one of the larger, if I remember, isn't there thirty three thousand? About one of the ones that was in question, the middle school. Correct. That's. I remember there was a question. Keep a carpet. It's over thirty two.
Does anybody have a hard copy of that? So I can get it.
See if I can call it up.
Because I can't find.
You have.
Jamie Munch. No.
Do you know what the what date or what mean that document?
Should be.
I don't know. I don't think this is the most up to date one.
It should be known.
Thank you.
Changes.
Thank you.
There's like five.
All right, stay tuned. Okay, so right off the bat, I'll do. Is it okay to go or?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I'm looking at page two. So I'm looking at Lily Behan's. Do we really need to convert the folding walls to fixed walls for five thousand dollars? Do we need to do that right now or can we hold off? It says it's. High, like it has to be done. I'm assuming. I don't know.
Both Principal Cal Grusson. After London.
Does it need to get done?
Just want to talk about that, right? Oh, yeah, thanks.
No, no.
Yeah, I can. I can speak to that. So over the summer, when I started. The school year, we had plans to do two of them. And we were able to get one done with Dr. Len's help. And then throughout the course of observations this year, it is pretty. Obvious that something does need to be addressed because the sound travels through the walls. And they're competing for, you know, that that space, you know, that airspace rather at the same time. So it's not as though their schedule allows for flexibility there. Where they've got, you know, kids in and out of the room at times. So that's a challenge that I definitely noticed. Thatself.
Okay, so I guess my I'm going to reiterate my point. When I was looking at the projects list and we're looking at being asked to eliminate. A teacher or a para or something of that nature. My question is, again, are there things that can be held off now? And done later to so that we don't have to get rid of a para or a teacher? Or someone that is having direct contact with a student? That's that's kind of where I'm at. That's it. That's it.
So. I mean, I think where we currently are, and again. Obviously, a process this will go through with Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. I think where we currently are is we're not eliminating. Those roles.
Correct.
So. Now, I'll speak for myself on these. I might worry on the repairs and maintenance work is. Is it? There's kind of the kicking the can argument. My my concern is. That this hundred, we spent one hundred and thirty thousand next year and do this work. If let's say there's fifty thousand we defer, then the following year is then one hundred and eighty nine thousand. And then we do for another fifty, we become two thirty and those become four hundred. And then it becomes a number that we can't manage. That's my concern is. If we do this kind of keep it up each time, it's kind of a steady amount and and kind of keep things and we don't get that. One where Chris comes to us and says, we need five hundred thousand dollars. And then we're sitting there like, what do we? What do we do with five hundred thousand? So that's that's my personal concern. Of if these are the things we need to do to upkeep the buildings, you know, as the starting point, that's where. But others.
Yeah, I I I agree, Eric. I think that a comment was made tonight about. Getting the baseline closer to where it needs to be. And that comment really. I think hit the mark because if we and if 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 we get presented with something, if if this doesn't go forward and we are looking at people or carpet. That's a different conversation and and I will agree with you, Candace, that but we're not there. We're. Right now, and I think this is an effort to put the baseline closer to where it needs to be. So I. I would be in favor of improving what we have now and and try to get because you. As exactly as Eric said, if we, you know, if that number keeps getting lower, then all of a sudden. We're showing a huge increase. Next year on trying to get the buildings in order. And and and. We're not talking about person or. Or repair right now. So I I say we keep it.
I just want to say that I agree with Bill because. We've got, like, like you said, basically, you know, I guess I should be saying, we don't know where we're going to be in three or four weeks from now. We may be scrambling, we may be not. But I. I think we need to do what we need to do. This is the fact. We need this. This is what we need. We need budget for raiders. And.
Any other thoughts overall on where we are? Any concerns like we're somewhat awkward. At a point. You know, the alignment is is going to be really important as we go to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. That we have our, you know, as a client to buy aligned on this project. Eight and then Candace.
Well, I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can? Make some money basically. Through adult education offerings. I know we pay fifteen thousand to. Is it New London?
Nor, yeah, New London, Norwich, yeah.
Right.
We have space here.
Oh, so that's income for us.
No, 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 we provide the space to them. Not a it's it's not a money maker. It's for it's a regional component that's here that sits at Eastside High School.
Okay, like Sacred Heart was offering classes at Lisbon and. And they were offering some of the building and then that was a source of revenue for those two towns at different points of time. And I know we had learned previously, we had the Chinese school previously, we had the spiral program previously. You know, I know we have a professional community. We have a lot of PhDs and people with masters, a couple of master's degree, people who have passions and ideas. Can teach a variety of topics. Is there any way that we could provide some of those adult education classes or? Use our resources for one of our buildings. One of the gentlemen who spoke tonight spoke to the fact that we do have buildings that. Are not used for most of the day, basically, when you think about it, because what we have seven to three. And then, you know, there's portions of the building that are being used, but just an idea, is there any way that we could? Have more different kinds of program? I mean, I know the senior center is very crowded and is basically. You know, needs more space and I don't. Anyway, I was just maybe done and I continue.
Yeah, Kate, as I stated, you know, my weekly, uh, weekly update this past Friday, the board has to look at the facility use charges that. Because, you know, case in point, the Sunday Chinese program, they left to go to a different district because there was no facility usage cost. We have a facility usage cost for nonprofit organizations. So you have to take a look at that other districts, their shop around. And and I think that's one of the bigger reasons that we don't see people knocking on our door to use our space. They went and knocked on a different district store and asked, and. Case in point, that's where they they landed sort of thing. They just paid for custodial usage. So we have, these buildings are used quite frequently. I think that perception is inaccurate. That was stated earlier that. These are empty buildings during the afternoons and evenings. They're not. They're used for a number of different things. Sports being one of them, but we can always continue to push if we as, you know, as a board, we want to talk about the facility. Charges that we have in place. Plus, you got to keep in mind, you know, park and rec, there is no charge for any of those. So they're using our turf fields, they're using our spaces. Where, you know, we can't necessarily, we don't have plenty of time to rent out, sort of thing to the community. Could be something we can look at though.
In FFO, we did spend time looking at the facility usage.
Yeah, but two years ago.
And one of the challenges you have is if you wanted to be a money maker. I would say more often it ends up a money loser. Because you end up, whether it's custodial charges, security charges and other things that now all of a sudden are going on. You have to make sure you recruit all that cost and. And the number gets pretty high, which is why people will go elsewhere to look. So I know we should look at it. We did, and it's been a couple of years, so we should definitely can bring a tap above and see how do we? Make a facility usage fee or those fees. Marketable, a market rate that people may be interested in, but make sure that and we make money at it. And I think we, a few years ago, when we looked at it, I think we struggled with the. Making money at it. Versus doing like if the senior center is at capacity and they need more space, we might be able to provide them space that. Low cost, no cost. I don't know how we'd work that out, but there might be something to do, but that wouldn't be a money maker.
That's more the community.
Community, yeah, exactly.
Okay, yes. So first, I just want to address the whole project list thing because I fully understand that I'm really the only one solely. Independently that is kind of speaking to it and it's okay. I really value everybody else's opinions as well. And I'm completely okay standing alone on it. There are definitely things on that project list that can be held off and they do not have to be pushed through right now. In my opinion. I want to address what Kate actually just brought up in regards to the parking rack and bringing revenue in because. That's something that I know that I've spoken to and some other folks have spoken to on the board. So I would like to go there. Okay. There are a lot of ways that we can bring revenue in. And again, we should note that that revenue actually goes back to the town. Okay. And that I look at that as a team effort. I don't look at it as we do this, they get this. I look at it kind of as a whole, like we do. The things that we do benefit our school district, which actually benefits our town, our home value and our community as a whole. So we all benefit. Right? If if you're in town, businesses also. So that that's a really great thing. When you're talking about the park and rec, we did bring this up at FFO and we have talked about this. At length. A lot of people don't realize. How much usage goes on that is not paid for. And it does add up. But this past budget season, you had brought up possibly charging. Right?
Yeah.
As an option, it was just because every single rock needs to be turned over, right? And it's why you have heard. Lots of different things come from us, me specifically in regards to administration. If someone's asking about teachers, then we need to talk about administration. So one of the options that was thrown out to look at because all options should be looked at was. Charging. Who's actually going to be charged? That's going to be our youth leagues, right? Our nonprofits, our basketball leagues, our cheering leagues, our right, our community. Right? And when you look at the price, and I understand charging a fee and I understand bringing in revenue. That's going to gut a lot of our programs that actually benefit a lot of our kids here in town. So it's almost like you're cutting your nose up to spite your face as as far as I, as far as I look at it. And it might not be the politically correct thing to say, but it's the truth. It's the truth. So. All options should be looked at for sure. The spiral program is something that dissipated during COVID. But prior to that, I am on the. Spiral committee, but we had talked about possibly branching out, not so much just with one area, but. A a different approach. So if that's something that.
Different countries.
I think that that would be a great idea for sure. To reinstate something like that.
I'd like to suggest that we form a subcommittee that maybe specializes on finding revenue. For the school. What she spoke to, what you spoke to about students coming in, I know that in my hometown. They bring in students from everywhere, house them downtown in their dorm and they go to the, they go to Kokomo High School. And I I've got to get more details. I'm waiting for how back. So what I'm saying is maybe we need for people in a subcommittee to really focus on that because I think it's difficult for us as a board. To try and manage that because we need to get, as I say, get into the weeds on this. So. I'd like to make that suggestion. I would want to make the decision if we want to go forward with it or not. But you want to say this is a citizen in the town of Eastline. To hear my word of that path. Oh, no, it is on still on. I don't understand. We let, we let, as we say, the rule is that parks and recs has access to all of our buildings. But then, for example, to go to daycare, that they run this fabulous daycare program in the summer, you know, parents pay a hundred and fifty. What is it now? Two hundred dollars? I have no idea what it is in March. So why can't we get kind of that? They were running those programs and I think our three elementarys, I I think we would be there if we ask for a kind of that. They have their own kind of money within the town budget. So we need to kind of that because we're educating all those students to go to that some program. And they're still getting money from the town itself, but they're able to charge for their services. So all in there, but again, I'd like to think about establishing.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Charles. In fact, so Jeff and so. Yeah, we've been a little distracted the past month and a half. I think on the budget, maybe. We've been meaning to have a goal something. And we are having it at March.
Yeah, next Monday.
Whatever, next Monday. We are having both. Okay, and this specific specific goal that we have around this. We've been talking about and and we're kind of leaning towards something. I don't know if we're, we'll talk about it more. I don't know if we're ready for a committee, but there has to be a group at least to come together because. When we talk about revenues and bringing revenues. We might get ten different opinions on what that actually means. So is it the parks and rec? Is it bringing in a spiral program?
You know what. I know what.
Oh, like what do where do we go after? Is it putting up signs on the turf field? Is it? Doing a spiral program? That's very different. Renting out space? Is it bringing in students from other districts? Like, there's a whole bunch of things you can talk about. And I think we need to figure out like what what do we want to focus on? Because there's too many things like that. So getting a group to say, what would that look like? Well, we'll talk about that next week, but I think that's exactly what we want to. We need to, we need to hone in. We've talked about it for a long time, but I think we just kind of continue to talk at a high level. We need to kind of focus and and decide this is what we want to drive as part of that goal.
Do you mind if I ask a question? You had mentioned it last, and I can't remember the number. If we were to hold off on the project list. What does that equate with the percentage we would be moving forward?
It was, it's a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars if we did nothing.
Right.
And so one thirty nine of five forty.
So essentially, it would.
That's twenty five. Point two five, right? Point two five for me. So it's eight point six three. Give or take.
Wait, I'm sorry.
If we took a hundred and thirty nine thousand now.
She can give it exactly.
Six point seven one.
Then the eight point eight eight, you drop eight point eight eight down by taking out a hundred.
Take out a hundred and thirty nine thousand from there. Yeah. If we went to it's six point seven one, we're we're going to get ready. No, I'm just kidding.
Point three seven. Say that again. Eight point three seven.
Eight point three seven. With a. To go from eight point eight eight down to.
It's it. I got eight point six two is what you said the other.
But would it bring it down to eight point three or eight point seven?
So I haven't gotten, I was playing with the numbers. Sorry, eight point six three.
Okay, that's that's. So we go from eight point eight eight to eight point six three if we drop the entire did not.
Yes, that that next week would be, I think, we got to get on the same page as which direction we kind of want to hone in on.
Well, that's why.
Yeah, exactly. And formulating a committee of sorts would be a great idea to kind of allow us to. Start targeting, what is on target. And we do a great job. The before and after school programs have done, you know, very well, entry. They bring in quite a bit of revenue and.
I think as Eric pointed out, it'd be interesting to to divide those things and are we? Are we charging our own? Are we generating revenue within our, by charging our own community members? Are we generating revenue from? Outside, right? Because that's a different.
And then charging park rec is challenging because if we charge them, they're going to turn around and charge us for the use of Brightbrook and Veterans Field.
Sort of thing with the. Yeah, that's that's so, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't.
You know, if Kate said, if there's a university that wants to offer courses in our school, that that sounds brilliant. That's that's different, right?
But padded over the years, they move around. Johns, there was, there's one other one, too. Sacred Heart might have been here for a little bit, but.
Speaking of facilities, though, when we moved here ninety six. And it was it was a Pfizer reload for us and they said, this is where you need to go. This is the school district that you should be in. I had to tell you, I was surprised by the disrepair in our schools and how outdated things were for the esteemed. Reputation that we have in our town. I expected better. I expected more. So moving here from Lincoln, Nebraska, again, that's where we came here from. I was shocked. So I think we really need, I think appearance is important. I think, you know, rugs without stains and rips are important. I think it improves morale. I I just think it's really important. So. Not to push back, but I. I just think it's important.
Like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the the eight point eight percent.
We need to. Get the exact.
So it's fifty eight million, nine hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred fifty. I'll second that. I'll third.
All those in favor? Say aye. Close. That's staying. All right, everyone.
Did you do second name?
I did, I did.
Oh, you did. Okay. I heard a third, so.
Sorry.
Lot of hard work and thank you, everybody, for putting the time and effort in. So. We do have a discussion item. Probably, but it's the next step, next steps for budget progression for like then.
Yeah, it's a problem like mine.
Yeah.
You know, friends and, you know, if anything changes.
But so we go, it goes to Board of Selectmen.
So March thirteenth, we present to the Board of Selectmen down at the Town Hall and share information with them. And then they move it on to the Board of.
And that's for information.
It's just informational purposes.
They can ask questions.
Ask questions. Yep, but it's informational purposes only. And then it goes on to the Board of Finance and that that. Board of Finance presentation on March twenty eighth is here in this. This stays here because, yeah, the town is being used for a different, you know, sort of commission me. So. It will be in here and I think we'll just roll it and set up with overflow working.
Yeah.
We're used to that process.
So assume and everything seems.
Exactly.
Okay.
Can we charge?
Offload that one. They have a connection.
So March twenty eighth, we present, they ask, they'll ask some questions, but then then they. Go back.
Deliberation deliberations will start and there's a series of meetings where they're reviewing the department budgets, our budget, they kind of start to blend those in together sort of thing. I don't have, we don't have those dates yet. I don't have, we don't have those dates yet for any of those deliberations, those are still, unless, and I don't know if you've seen or heard of any of those yet, it was still in progress, from, from what I know, that I I didn't know when the exact liberation dates were.
Mark those down.
Okay.
And those are, those would be in early April.
Those would be, yes, correct.
Yeah, I'd be here to get the twenty fourth, is that correct?
Twenty fourth of April is the final public budget hearing on the overall town and Board of Ed budget.
These are all gonna be to like seven o'clock.
Yeah, and right now, that's incorrect, and six thirty or seven o'clock, we'll get the times.
Is that gonna be at the end of the school again, or is that gonna be
As of right now, it's slated for Mrs. Kelly, I believe, here in the auditorium, if I remember correctly, so on the, for that April twenty fourth of the year, that could change based on, you know, deliberations and feedback and size and everything, yeah. So
And do, do we do we have a information about what the impact is gonna be tax wise, are we getting any closer to that, or is that all have to happen when this whole thing gets deliberated, is that, we, we can't get any of those numbers ahead of time?
It's moving closer, but
So, so we, when we met, the finance director gave an estimate of one point seven five mils, that includes the town budget and our six point nine seven percent increase, that's where the mill rate stood, so obviously the town still has to make changes. So, they're obviously, we've added now to that six point nine seven, so the increase, so probably what we just did will have probably about some no. So about another point four mils, approximately, what we just found it was, so one point seven five plus point four, so it'll be over two mils.
And one, correct me if I'm wrong, one mil is two point seven million dollars.
Oh, oh, two point seven or two point five, so, yeah.
One mil.
One mil, seven five. The value of one mil is two million seven hundred thousand, that's right, I thought it was two million five hundred, two million seven hundred. So obviously, we're adding a million thirty seven thousand, so it's probably about three five, I don't know.
But we don't, we don't know in terms of
Revenue.
Dollar, revenue coming in.
The finance director of the town, they calculated that he had to have included whatever revenue they're projecting, Kevin did, Kevin they're looking at other, at maybe adjusting some of that revenue, but at that point, it's whatever revenue they have.
And in terms of dollar, you know, bringing it to dollar per you know, home.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so I think when I had calculated it at one point four five mils, the calculation I did, it was five hundred dollars, so if you're looking at one point seven five, it's maybe like seven hundred dollars, if you're looking at
For three hundred thousand dollars.
If you're looking at over two mils, it's probably like a thousand.
That's, that's a significant number.
It is.
But we don't know the revenue offset to that, that's just the expense increase.
No, that, no, that's, in order for him to calculate a mill rate, he has to include the revenue, there's no way for him to have come up with a mill rate about
But is it the revenue just taken last year's, or looking at forecast?
So, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I'm pretty sure it includes his, whatever projected revenues he has at this point.
And did he calculate the decrease in ex, in educational cost sharing, okay, because that, that potentially should go back up. The, the town is slated to lose almost three hundred thousand dollars in educational cost sharing dollars.
Plus, they had another point of that decrease by, so their total loss, when you look at Eastline, as a whole, is about five hundred eighty five thousand in state of rubbish.
Some of that should be reinstated.
Hopefully.
Right, so if they reinstate the CS grant, obviously that way.
And health insurance costs that they have now, too.
Yeah.
Go in some more money, but
Do we know what that's looking like, though?
Nothing other than the eight to ten percent recommendationation, and we're still at the twelve percent.
They were supposed to have a follow up meeting in February, but
Yep. Okay.
The state, so hopefully in March something. I'll wait to make motions, we're adjourned.
I'll second.